Okay, would everybody please rise and move the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Superintendent, would please call the role for...
Ms. Coramier.
Present.
Ms. Crowley.
Present.
Mr. Kissel.
Here.
Mr. Lipsit.
Here.
Mr. Malrenin.
Present.
Dr. Wells.
Here. So this is the regular school committee meeting of January twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-two, and I remind everybody that this is recorded and videotaped, and by participating, you're agreeing to be videotaped and recorded. So first up is approval of minutes, minutes for one eleven twenty-two.
Motion approved.
Okay, second, any comments on the... All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Before we get to public comment, I want to recognize in the audience Mike Concanon, president of city council, and Mr. Viola, Ward Seven Alderman, and maybe if he wants to come up, he's going to be our representative from the committee. And most of us know you, Charlie, but maybe if you want to just give a little background about yourself and why you're, you know...
Thank you so much.
Yeah, and your interest in edu... I know you have a strong interest in education, and we thank you for representing. So if you want to just give a little background about yourself.
Background about myself, lifelong Woburnite, lived here my whole life, grew up, went through all the schools, have a background in criminal justice, worked for the Middlesex Sheriff's Office, been there for sixteen years, ran a couple times the school committee unsuccessfully, but did learn a lot about the school system, and I hope to bring that, to learn more about it from you guys.
Yeah, we appreciate your coming before us. Mr. Concanon set the standard, so I'll give you a few hints about how to do it, but it's very important to us that the council know what we're doing, because we don't want to just be seen as people that come on budget time and ask for a lot of money. You know, I think there's a lot of great things happening in the school system, and I think you can help convey that. And we're glad, if you have any questions, you know, submit them to myself or the superintendent, and we can get that information for you. Mr. Concanon.
Thank you, Mr. Jim, and I think we've got a good pick here, and Chuck, he's definitely expressed an interest in this role. We've talked about the benefit of this role and the relationships that are established, and as you said, the benefit in not just seeing each other at budget time, but having a presence from the council here at the meetings to understand how the budget is formulated, and more importantly, what it's spent on and the benefit that we're getting from those dollars. I found it invaluable, I really appreciated my time here. As you said, I was recently elected the president, so the liaison position became open. In talking with many members of the council, it was clear that Chuck was the one who would do an outstanding job and had the interest and would be committed to coming to the meetings and keeping those communication lines open. So I look forward to a seamless transition, and I'm sure you'll extend to him the courtesy and the friendship that you did to me. I enjoyed my time here. I learned a lot. As we've talked about, this is the biggest cost center in the city, and when it comes right down to it, it's probably the most important thing we do as a city. And we've got the precious cargo that we're educating, and nothing means more to us than that. So this is an important function for the city council, and I believe that it's in good hands. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and so we look forward to working with you. Mr. Viola.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now I'm going to open it up for public comment. We have a special guest here today, couldn't get him on the agenda, but he's going to come on up and explain an activity that's going on in the city. So if you would mind just introducing yourself and then telling us about this activity.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brian Horden, and this is my eighth year teaching as a history teacher at the Joyce Middle School, and it's my third year as the advisor of our JMS Theater program. The JMS Theater program is performing its third musical in as many years on Friday, February fourth, at seven P. M., and Saturday, February fifth, at one P. M. and five P. M. here at the Joyce Middle School in the auditorium. We started this program a little over two years ago when three high school students, Megan Dever, Tara Metters, and Melissa Murphy, approached me with an idea to start a Joyce Middle School theater program that would produce a musical each year, be directed by high school students, and supervised by adults. We performed Annie Junior in February of two thousand and twenty in the high school auditorium, and our program was officially born. Then a month later, everything changed. After six months of quarantine due to the pandemic, our students returned to school in September of two thousand and twenty with a hybrid format for in-person instruction. The directors and I decided to offer a weekly virtual theater program on Google Meet for our cast members returning from Annie Junior, as well as new students who were interested in joining our program. In April of two thousand and twenty-one, we started the process of rehearsing for an outdoor performance of The Little Mermaid Junior that we held on June nineteenth and twentieth. Through a generous donation of a supporter of our program, we had a stage built on the Joyce soccer field next to the CAF for our four performances. After everything our students went through in the previous fifteen months, I can safely say that this was the most rewarding experience of my career. The connections that we made with the high school directors and the students made with each other, the phenomenal performances they had, they get to show to the whole community, was essential to their development. It was the perfect way to end a long and challenging school year. And this brings us to Mary Poppins Junior that's only a week and a half away. After leaving the program, they started for two years. It was time for our original directors to leave Woburn and attend university. After careful thought, we chose new directors that came right from our program for the previous two years. Woburn High freshman Riley McDonough, Sophia Moylan, Kevin Santos, and Megan Sheehy have been leading our students since November in every aspect of this production that one can think of. As their advisor, I've been able to witness them work with the students on acting, dancing, singing, while also creating sets, costumes, props, schedules, and everything else that's needed to put on a production like this. Watching high school students, especially those in their first year, who can't even drive a car yet, take on this leadership role is everything a teacher could want to see from students who are middle schoolers themselves at the Joyce this time last year. Giving students the opportunity to express themselves and discover the skills and strengths that they never knew they were capable of, whether onstage or behind the curtain, is what this program is all about. And I have full confidence that every single one of them will make me and all of us proud when they're doing their bows next weekend. Thank you for your time tonight and for ever support of this program, and I hope to see you all on the Fourth and Fifth.
And just before you go, if you could just remind, because we are being videotaped, remind the audience, you know, where they can get the tickets and...
Yep. So we do have a poster out there, we're having posters that are being produced right now with a Q. R. code. So we basically set up a Google Doc, because we're very cognizant of the pandemic, so on there are the three shows, the links to the Google form. And so we're asking people to reserve their seats ahead of time. It's seven dollars a ticket, and they will pay in person. This is giving us an opportunity to be able to track how many people are coming per show to make sure that we don't go over the numbers that we're comfortable with.
I explained that citizen participation, we don't do discussion, so he's aware of that. We're going to have him come back in the springtime and tell us more about the program, and then we can have full committee discussion. So thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for having me.
And we wish you well with the production, and we look forward to seeing you again on the spring.
Just one time on Saturday?
One at five, we're doing two shows on Saturday, so...
Okay, thank you. And if you give your presentation to Jean over there, she can put it in our minutes, and then it'll be recorded for posterity.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to comment on citizen participation? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on to the next item. It's our student representative from the high school, I think it's Sophia tonight. Hi.
Hello.
So what do you have to tell us about what's happening at the high school?
All right, so the first semester is wrapping up this week, with students that were absent last week making up mid-year examinations. Term three classes started on Monday, and students are off to a great start. Report cards will be published one week later, February fourth, to allow for students to make up exams this week. New courses for the two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three were approved by the curriculum subcommittee last week, and hopefully will be approved by the whole this evening. There are some exciting new opportunities for students to include an American Studies cross-curricular English and History course, dual enrollment classes in English, History, Business, and Math, and additional courses to round up the innovation, pathways in the sciences. Students will select courses for next year in mid-March. The March early release date for Woburn Memorial High School is moved to March second. As a result, March twenty-second will be a full day for the Woburn Memorial High School students. This is due to a conflict with MCAS testing dates for sophomores. Woburn Memorial High School has earned the College Board AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award in two thousand and twenty-one for achieving high female representation in AP Computer Science, a school honored with the AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award, have expanded the girls' access in AP Computer Science courses. Congratulations to Mr. Prinsic and Ms. Getharall for building and continuing the Computer Science program in Woburn Memorial High School. In partnership with the TALS organization through Microsoft has also provided invaluable support in growth and expansions of the Computer Science program in Woburn High School. And upcoming events are February second, there's an early release day for all students, dismissed at eleven-thirty. February second, there's also a senior internship fair, twelve to two P. M. February fourth, term two and semester one report cards are published. February thirteenth, WDSS mail-a-thon for seniors applying, two dollars for scholars. February vacation is from February nineteenth to February twenty-seventh. In February twenty-eighth, MIAA state winter tournaments start for all sports. And finally, on March fourth, term three progress reports go out.
Thank you for that update. And then if any members have any comments? Mr. Malrenin?
No. You. I got them.
Mr. Kissel.
Real quick, I don't know who, I hope she can hear me. The internship program, the fair, is what date again?
The internship will be February second.
Second, okay, and that was twelve to two?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, great, thanks.
Mr. Lipsit?
It's probably not a great question for tonight, but I'm just leafing through the proposed additions to the course catalog. I'd love to hear, you know, assuming that the committee does approve it tonight, down the line, which of these courses that, you know, particularly interest you as a student?
Um...
I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it yet, so down the line, maybe a better choice.
I haven't, like, gone into it, but I think the, like, cross-courses, like, the cross-curricular with, like, English and History, like, I think that's pretty fun. I don't know, it'll be interesting.
So we'll take that opportunity that he's raised it. So what interests you at school? Is it history, English, science, math?
I love history, and, like, that's one thing that...
See, Mr. Lipsit gave me money to ask that question, but...
I got the right answer, so...
Mr. Harden.
But thank you very much, and anything else from the committee? Now, we appreciate you taking this time, and we're hoping in the near future, maybe you can come in person. I don't know if you would be interested in doing that.
Yeah, if my schedule is, like, inflected, I wouldn't see a problem with that.
Okay, good, so hopefully down the road, we'll see you. Okay, well, thank you very much, enjoy the rest of the evening. You're welcome to stay, of course, and listen, but you might have better things to do.
I think I'm gonna...
Bye. Okay, yeah. It's, you know, great to hear from the students, and, you know, they seem so excited about school. Anyways, moving on, this is, you know, I think we're going to have this for a regular agenda item for a little bit, hopefully not too much longer, but it seems the parents are very interested in this, so I asked the superintendent to give another COVID update tonight.
Sure, so a lot of this will look a little familiar to last week, but with some updated information. I'm obviously going to speak about the schools, but one of the things that I think is important is that people recognize that the city has a great resource as it relates to COVID. It's the city of Woburn website, and up here on the top right hand is a COVID center, which brings you to a lot of data points in the city that, if people are interested in the city numbers, that it's readily available, and it's updated every week. And so I say that because I'm going to share school numbers, but things are hap... You know, it's not as if it happens in the city and not in the schools, it's sort of co-mingled. But I just thought it's a great resource, and I wanted to highlight that to people that might be listening tonight. What I did do, you can see that as of Friday the twenty-first, as in the city, the fourteen-day positivity rate was at twenty-three point six-nine. So it's still obviously incredibly high, but I'm going to show you momentarily So, it's a fluid, and it, it's a fluid process. So, people may come on, but people come off at the same time. So, it's never a static, a static number. Here's the positive case trend. This is tied to our dashboard and so, the, this time here is the vacation, just before vacation. And then, when we came back and you can see the decline is pretty precipitous. So, again, related to our dashboard. Our website, again, we're posting all the updates to our website, so if people have any questions about where we are as it relates to COVID, they can certainly use our Woburn Public Schools website. Our Health Services page is found on our website under the department. So, if you click Department and then it will link you to the Health Services Department, which is our nurses. And so, any people that want to get more detailed information about our protocols or flow charts or how to contact any of the school nurses can certainly do that. And new to this site, I believe, is going to be this. This was talked about last, at the last meeting. The question was how many cases are in each school? And again, this, it, we had to build this out from scratch and I want to thank Jen Judkins, the Tech Director for the Woburn Public Schools, for working on this. She's actually presenting at a national conference in Florida right now. And so, so simultaneous to being down there, she was helping to build this out. And so, the way we're thinking about this is it's, it will, it will reside on our Health Services page and as the information gets put in by the nurses, it will update. We need to make sure that it's working correctly, it's new, and so, we'll monitor it to, as I say, just to, we, one of the things that we're very cognizant of is people's privacy. And so, we want to make sure that we're honoring that. And so, but again, the request was, was made and this is our attempt to try to answer This is the numbers that we report to DESI. We actually reported today. You can see at the bottom, we reported 74 students and nine staff from last week to this week. But on the positive trend, you could see January 12th, we had 306 students and 51 staff. So, certainly, the number of students has gone down dramatically as has the number of staff. So, as I said at the previous meeting a couple of weeks ago, staffing was a concern. You can see why. We're still cognizant of certainly that we have to make sure we maintain our mitigation technique and strategy, but it seems like we're trending certainly in the right direction. Another metric that we were, we've been watching is the attendance rates. And so, what, what I did here is, this is the first day back, January 3rd. You can see our, our student attendance rate was 77.2% overall and we had 75 staff out. And so, on the 21st, when we pulled it, it was 91.9%. So, we're, and that's pretty close to, to normal. And so, and 45 staff out is still slightly higher than normal, but it's not, you know, certainly it's 30 staff different. So, I just wanted the committee and anybody listening to be aware that things are trending in, in a very positive direction as it relates to attendance. And a few updates, last Saturday, there was a, the Board of Health, the Woburn Board of Health, had a vaccine clinic at the Senior Center. We had over 200 students, 12 and over, either get vaccinated or boosted. And so, we're looking to run another clinic. I'm working with the Board of Health to identify if it, if it should be the 12 and over again or the 5 to 11. It's more complicated when it's the younger students because the dosage is different. And so, again, credit to the Board of Health and to the nurses for their efforts. The other thing that happened last Saturday was, I believe, the City of Woburn handed out the test kits, the rapid test kits to, to people in the Saturday afternoon. And so, I think that obviously we're, we're working in lockstep with the city to try to provide as much information and safety to, to the residents. So, I wanted to highlight that. This next point, there was updated DESI DPH guidance that came out last week. And essentially, it's called an opt-in program that I'll, I'll talk about momentarily. We've had multiple meetings with the City of Woburn Board of Health on what this looks like. They support the school department opting in to this new program by DESI. And I sent out a correspondence on Monday to all of the Woburn Public Schools explaining what this opt-in process was. And I'm, right now, we have 1,201 staff and students, I didn't disaggregate it, that have opted in to this new testing program. And what the testing program is, is that every two weeks, if you opt in, you'll be handed a testing, a test kit that has two tests in it. So, each kit has two tests. And then, the intent is that you would take one of those tests per week for the course of two weeks. So, we're not handing out kits every week to people, it's every two weeks to those that opt in.
And alternating between staff and students? So, staff go one week, students go the next week?
Yes, so, we, we are going to submit tomorrow to DESI our student count because next week is when the students who opt in will get their test kits. So, and then the following week, it will be the staff and then this, you know, the students. So, that's the, the, the plan is for this program to run, I think, till April 22nd is how the state has it set up right now. And so, again, it's an opt-in. And so, the other thing we're going to do is have hard copy letters, you know, at each school and translate it so people that want to opt in can. So, it's not, you don't have to make your decision now and live with it forever. We believe there's flexibility to opt in throughout the process. So, I'm going to try to do something fancy here. So, one of the things that I did, I did want to, so, we send it out now, it's called Smore. And the reason I'm doing this, this brings us to what I sent out on Monday. And, you know, I'm not going to read it with you, but one, I did want to highlight, the reason we're using Smore is it has this ability to translate very easily. So, anybody that gets the Smore, and they can do this on their phone, too. You select whatever language you want to see it in.
That's cool.
And if you want to see it, you know, in Hindi, there it is. If you want Portuguese, there we go. And so, this, this app, Smore app, and why we're pushing things out via Smore is designed specifically, it's, it's easy for us to use, but also, we believe, offers a great tool for, for families to be able to navigate the, the site easily into their own native language.
And I noticed some high contrast and accessibility stuff in there.
Yeah, so, yeah, thank you. So, you could, this is what you were just referencing. So, yeah, so, again, it's, it's new to us. We adopted Smore last year at the elementary level especially on a trial basis, but felt like it was something that was beneficial as it relates to communication to our families. So, I, I wanted just to take the opportunity to share that with the, with the committee and the, and the community as, as a way to highlight our translation opportunities. So, as I said, currently, there's just over 1,200. It's probably, it could be a little higher now. And then, when, when we opt into this, what that does is then, there's no more test and stay and there's no more contact tracing that happens at the schools. That's part of the, the process with DESI and DPH. We've had our nurses on multiple webinars who have, they've been working tirelessly, but this, this is a great relief to them. Hopefully, will allow them to feel that they, you know, they're still going to, and then, but they are still going to test symptomatic kids and staff at school. So, that's the new program, the overview. The Smore has the whole thing laid out. The, the school nurses, I keep saying it, have been doing an amazing job. And the principals, each school is slightly different and so, if people had any questions about what the, the test, the new testing program is, feel free to reach out to school nurses or principals. We'll continue to follow the DESI DPH Board of Health guidelines so that after five days, if you're feeling well enough to come back to school, you can, but you're going to be masked for an additional five days. And so, that, we've been doing that since we came back in January and it seems to be working. It allows our, our staff and students to get back to school sooner. Those that aren't feeling good, stay home. And we keep repeating that, too. So, and at the end is the repeat, the DESI extended masks to February 28th. And then, we don't have the remote option. So, the numbers that I shared earlier of the trends going in a positive direction feels good. You know, I think we're going to be able to, you know, educate in person as we have been. And, you know, certainly, I see Mr. Hein is still here. It's, it's a tough year and, you know, it, it's been a challenge, but I think being in person makes a difference to, to the kids and to the teachers and so, and to the families. So, anyway, I think that's, that's the end of my presentation.
Yeah, thank you very much. So, committee, Mr. Kissel.
Uh, great presentation, keeps, keeps people up to date. You mentioned on the Smore program, the language program, it's, it's on this for the COVID things. Is it, maybe I missed it. Did you say it's for, can be used for all correspondences sent out? Or we...
So, the majority of correspondence, we're going to try to use Smore. Sometimes, there's things that, like, I, I also use a communication tool called Blackboard and for automated phone, like, I can't make phone calls through Smore, but newsletter-type things, I can push out via Smore.
Oh, good.
And the Smores are used at the building, at the building level very consistently.
Oh, good.
Yeah, the prin, all principals are using Smore to push out their newsletters.
Is there a cost to that at all?
Minimal.
There is a cost, but it's, it's...
Minimal.
Yeah, we get a certain number of licenses as a district.
Okay.
And it's, you know, it's, I think it's money well spent because it allows us to communicate pretty effectively.
I know, I know with like Google Translate, a few others, it doesn't cross over exact. You know, you, you could be saying things that, it's a little more of a word-for-word as opposed to phrases. So, this is a better program, it's great. Regarding last Saturday, I wasn't able to go to handout, but I know both of our aldermen and, and that are in person here today, Mike and Chuck, we're both there handing out test kits as well. So, it's good that, like you mentioned, the city, it's kind of a whole package, the city working with the schools and everyone kind of working together to make things hopefully better, so.
Absolutely.
I can attest that it was very efficiently run. I was over there. Alderman Farillo was over there, too. I saw him and people were in and out pretty quickly. It really, I was amazed. So, thank you. Ms. Chisholm.
Yeah, and the staff that's out, is that just COVID numbers there or could it be a staff out or another reason?
Other reasons as well. Yeah, thank you. Right, yeah.
Yeah, it's like the numbers...
And, and to that, it's not just teachers, too. It's all staff, so.
Right, so, because we don't want people to think this 43 classroom is that...
No, that's what, yeah.
So, that's a good thing. And on these, these kids that are going home, do they have to use them? I'm, I'm assuming a lot of parents think it's for them to take home to keep if they become ill and not have to, so do they have to report every Monday that they've actually used it or how is that going to work? Because I know that, I've talked to a few people, they're like, "Oh, I just want to keep them in the house." I'm like, "Uh, okay."
They need to report if they're positive to the nurse.
Right. Do they have to use both, is what I'm saying, every Monday? Do they have to test?
So, once, once we, there's a couple of things. We, we have to submit our order tomorrow to DESI. We don't know what day we're going, we're going to get the tests yet. So, we're anticipating hypothetically Friday, giving the test kits out to whomever. Staff, it's easy, but it's the kid distribution.
Right.
And then, like I said, the intent is that the, the people that are opting in would test and then report the, the, the result if it's positive to the nurse.
Okay, but, but they don't have to test or do they have to? That, that was the question, Chuck, if I go get two, do I have to do this once a week in order to do this? Or is it something I can just, because that's what they thought the same thing about picking them up at the, you know, the Senior Center. I thought that was the case, if you just keep them on hand.
The seniors, yeah, the Senior Center was you keep them on hand. This one, the ideal thing would be to test every week and report it, but obviously, there's no testing police. It's only people need to report it when they're positive.
I think it would be, you know, we would, we would ask people that if they're opting in, that it is for the purpose of weekly testing. However, it is only monitored to the extent to which we can.
Right.
Okay, because that, that's the truth of the point, I thought that. Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Alseth?
Yep. How do they pick up the tests? They're available Thursday at 2:00, do they have to come to the schools, do they get sent home?
The, the tests?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll distribute at the schools.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, like I said, staff, you know, each principal will have a way to get that, whether it's a mailbox or whatever. And then, at the elementary, we've had meetings about it, so...
It will look different at different levels. At the elementary level, I would, I would anticipate it being much more controlled in, in backpacks home, where at the high school, it would be more of a, of a, of a student pickup.
Okay, so, students could take, take home?
Yes.
Parents don't have to get something?
No, students, students are taking them.
Yeah, the intent is they go home during the day.
Yes.
Like at the end of the day.
Great, as a parent, you know, these formality...
Yes. They do not need to drive to the school.
I was asking that question on my list as well.
And I just want, and I just want to thank you, Dr. Crowley, for breaking the, the cases down by school because as we all know, that was a huge concern for parents and so, I appreciate you responding to that.
Sure.
So, that's, that was good for the parents to be aware of.
Alseth?
So, just a, now that test and stay appears to be going away, when there is a close contact in the schools, how does that get handled, just so everyone's clear on the protocol? So, if a student is registered as a close contact without test and stay, what happens at this point?
They, it will just be monitoring for symptomatic. There'll be no notification of...
And there's no, there's no quarantining or anything along those lines?
No, there's no quarantine, there's, correct.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I'm not, I'm not thrilled with that portion of it. I understand the, you know, I understand all of the struggles that we've been having and I understand all of the, the issues involved. That, that piece worries me.
If I might say, Ms. Lipsit, the, the nurse, the healthcare professional, in, in her judgment, and I say her because we have all female nurses, if they feel as though they need to reach out to, to a family for some reason, they certainly can. It's not that they're prevented, it's just that it won't be required for us to report close contacts to families as we have in the, for the past years.
Okay.
I know.
Anybody else? Mr. Marrennen?
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Chisholm, if I could, Dr. Crowley, back up to the school numbers again. I just want people to be aware of your kind of asterisked line there. Each school was blocked out. How many schools you had? There you go. Sorry, one there, just, were you indicating, again, great presentation updating the public and the concerns of the, the parents where, I don't know if you can see that, I can see my glasses on, Bailey, says, "Please note that there can be up to one school day delay in report of cases." So, I've indicated, it's kind of brand-new to this and Ms. Jenkins is kind of pitching out now and launching it and you folks are trying to navigate through another dashboard. So, it's just good that you put that on there so people aren't looking at it. Today, getting a, you know, a false sense of security, tomorrow it changes, it's just the way the system's set up right now. But I think that makes a good point to those that are, you know, super concerned about things like this, that you're doing the best you can. And we say that each and every time, you get an update on anything COVID, yourself and the city, we're doing the best we can regarding the situation. You're dealing with DESI, the City of Woburn... You're dealing with DESI, the city's dealing with supply and test procedures, but I think overall, this is, wants a better update where we're coming down. Come what.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, this is, this is a slide that I think.
Ms. Komi.
Oh, when does that go live, the per-school?
I just need to contact Jen in Florida. And I think have her link it to the health services page.
Okay, so it's already, it's seemingly ready to go.
I think it's ready, ready to go.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? I want to thank the superintendent for this. And, you know, I want to thank people who have been reaching out. COVID really has increased parent involvement to some extent in the schools, and, you know, the superintendent does read all the emails. He may not act the way a parent wants, because he's working at the whole system and with limited resources, but some of the things that we can institute and that the superintendent feels in consultation with the Board of Health that are useful, he's, he's adopted. So, again, thank you, everybody who's reaching out to us, and we're reading them, and if we don't implement it, it's not because we didn't read it, it's because we couldn't do it for whatever reason. So, thank you. Okay. Thank you again. Okay. So, I just want to inform the committee, the next two items, the Family and Community Engagement Liaison, and the Executive Director of the Boys and Girls, Boys Club, and the YMCA of Greater Boston Associate Director. I didn't feel we could give them their due attention tonight because of our agenda, and so I really want to have them here, because they're all great activities. You know, it's, it's really our school system, working with our community members to provide for students, you know, and providing an environment where they can learn outside of the school, and just reaching out to people that necessarily we don't always get in contact with. So, I will, they are gonna be on a future agenda item, and we will give them their due recognition. So, I apologize we couldn't have them here tonight. We will in the near future. The next item I wanted to talk about, and this is really a school committee, it's under School Committee Operations, and it just has to do how we're gonna proceed with a few things. And so, the first item that I wanted to talk about is the use of Zoom, and Zoom meetings. And I wanted to get a feel from the committee what they thought. Do they think it was beneficial? Do we want to continue it? Do we want to set the deadline for it? Or how do we want to handle that? So, I'm willing to, Mr. Kissel.
Is the question, are you talking for these meetings or subcommittee and people being able to?
Well, there's two, there's two aspects. One would be this meeting. The other one would be subcommittees, where there's a hybrid meeting going on, a hybrid meeting. So, I think the first one is, you know, you know, last year we did, I think, Zoom meetings for some of our budget meetings, as I'm, Crowley can enlighten us, because she was doing all that thing. And it was a lot of work, and, you know, I just want to get a feel for the committee, how they felt, you know, did it aid, or can we do without it? So, I'll start with Mr. Kissel.
I'll still make a quick statement, and then I'll, you know, maybe make a decision. I know a while ago, you know, a few years before COVID and Zoom, it was even a word meaning this, to make phone calls into a meeting, you had to give like 24 hours and a good reason. I thought it was part of a mass general law.
Right.
So, how did, had that changed with the Zoom? Did we get a, like a blanket? Okay, so, do we want to give that?
Ms. Crowley maybe can enlighten us, because it happened, the state changed the regulations.
Yeah, the open meeting law allows members to be remote now.
Okay.
Because of COVID.
So, if we give up that, if we give that option up, so to speak, I mean, are we giving it up to, then we'd have to kind of reinstate it, because?
No.
The, the law is the, you know, the law is the law. It's really how we want to operate.
Okay, okay.
That's really what I want to find out, is what the committee thinks. Mr. Lipsen.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I think having a remote option for members is a really useful thing. We used it the other day in the Communications Subcommittee. Correct me if I'm wrong, we have, for example, Google Meet has a free option that's accessible for people, if we were, well, it's not accessible, and that's my point, it's not publicly accessible. So, for meetings where we would need public, for public comment or things like that, that's something where we would need Zoom. So, it's really a question of, of what the priorities are here. I mean, are we going to continue to use Zoom for public comments? I think it has been very useful for that in the past, maybe not in the last few months. But I think for, for internal stuff, for subcommittee meetings, if a member needs to be virtual, I think Google Meet could do the trick. So, that's, I'm just thinking about the differentiation in terms of all the here.
You want to?
Yeah, I mean, for things that are not open meetings, like subcommittee meetings still are open meetings, so we would still, I don't know how many things we could really do with Google Meet versus?
You would be allowed to use Google Meet if it was someone who is on the subcommittee.
Was in the room.
Right. True. Yeah. I believe that's correct.
Right, the idea would be, the meeting would be in-person, but somebody couldn't get there. They could use Google Meet to be there. I think that's what he's talking about.
Okay.
Yeah, so we couldn't have a full subcommittee meeting on Google Meet, but if a member needed to be virtual, we would still be having an open meeting, because we would still be physically present, but one member virtual.
And so, the public would not be able to?
The public would be able to attend in person as they.
Just as normal as they have, okay.
Just by way of information, the, our Zoom costs us $150, $150 a month, around there. And we have a, a large audience capabilities due to situations. So, we have about, I think, 5,000 or so. So, we have, we have a very large account. But I, you know, my opinion is we should keep it, because, you know, until open meeting law changes again, maybe we should just keep it as a backup.
What is, what is the cost for a minimum? I mean, I, you know, because we could always increase if we needed to, if we thought that things were gonna change.
I think it's like 40, but then you, it's just different levels of things, so. And once, the city council used it once, so it was versatile.
Our, no?
Yeah, I, I loaned it. We'll, we'll be sticking.
Let me just say, Ms. Chisholm, did you want to weigh in?
If we could keep it to a point, I mean, we had what, 500 people at one point during our thing, I think if we could reduce it to that, I don't know what we'd do. It's nice to have in our back pocket, at least until we know that officially we can say COVID is over and I think it's within a couple of months, and we can just throw it away and go back to what we normally would do. But it is, I think that it's great that parents actually do tune in, and I think that that's very helpful, because we are not live, you know, through cable. So, I think it is nice if people want to do that, it would be a good opportunity. But if we could do Google Meet, you know, maybe we could do that. But I think for a while, we can hang on to it for a couple of months anyway, and see what we go with that.
Mr. Lipsen.
And just a point, it may be worth investigating, again, with, with Google Meet, the degree to which we can have external people. I mean, my school did parent-teacher conferences recently using Google Meet, and we were able to get people in who were not members of the school district. So, it's a potential option. It might be worth looking at whether or not that's something we could use for public comments, and then save the cost.
Yeah, I don't know. I know that you, you have to like allow them in.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if they need to be invited to the link, or if they can just access the link. I don't know if there's a difference.
That's what I was gonna say. When I invite external guests, if you will, it, you know, it forces you to make that decision.
Yeah. Instead of just being.
Instead of just having an open link that they can go to.
Ben Duckett.
Could be a question. That's a general turn to Florida.
Yes, whichever turns to Florida, she'll be a better person.
Mr. Kissel.
And we may want to check on that. That's probably no different than we have a meeting, the door is closed, we open it for them, as opposed to being open door. An analogy, the same. So, I mean, I'm saying that.
Yeah, no.
We can check on that.
That's a distinction with a difference, so, yeah.
Yeah. And then I guess the question, you know, and I'm not sure, are we Zooming meetings regularly, or do we have to do it specially? Crowley, I was wondering, since you seem to be the Zoom, like, right now, are we Zooming the meeting?
No.
No, so, so I think, you know, that's the other thing we should think about. If we have the account, how should we use? And problem is, it requires somebody to do stuff.
Oh, yeah, we could, we could do that. It would, we could Zoom all of our meetings.
Right. Yeah. I don't, maybe your, the curriculum might, Communication Subcommittee might want to look at that, because if we're paying for it, might as well use it.
All right.
And, you know, but again, the logistics of it, you know, I don't want a member to have to do a lot of work and sort of be distracted from the meeting. That's, that's my.
Oh, I don't, yeah.
And I think, you know, we'd have to limit the, you know, if, if we're Zooming the meeting, at least this is my opinion, we really can't be taking questions during the meeting.
Oh, right, of course not.
Yeah, right, it would just be for observational purposes, and then people can email.
Turn the chat off.
Yeah.
That's a great idea, Dr. Wells, we can look into that.
Okay. Mr. Marren.
Thank you, Mr. Kevin. I think, right now, we're probably being livestreamed by Boobin Public Media, not so much, however they do it on YouTube or livestream on Facebook, is the last method they've been using. If you can all recall, the difficulties when we first started Zooming, two years ago, maybe?
Yeah.
And it's my understanding now, and we do have a couple of council members here tonight, that, you know, not that COVID is over, but we're still looking at vaccinations, we're looking at lessening some of the restrictive measures that we have. We, we're not really restricting audience members tonight, we're not restricting anybody about anything, really, but I think to keep the Zoom account free and available to us until such time that we don't need it, in the event you have to hybrid something for subcommittee meetings, and it's available to members to use, I think, I like the idea of whatever it takes, but I don't want to cut it off and just say we're only gonna be live, in the event that all of a sudden, there's another variant. Dr. Ben, Dr. Crowley, you gotta do it all. But, you know, you want to have it available to us, and maybe, you know, Zoom, you know, blogs office, I'm sure it's not a lot of money. Is it cheaper to have 100 audience members at Zoom, or catalog at 200, or whatever that takes financially, but that's no big deal either. But I know, you know, it doesn't seem to be a lot going on. Obviously, during COVID and during budget, it was overcrowding the Zoom account. And thank Ms. Crowley again, she was trying to navigate. And if people raising their hands, losing their hands, cutting out, you know, technology difficulties everybody had, and that's come a long way as well, I'm sure.
Think for yourself, Mike.
I know. She asked me, I'm dumb, I mean.
And I don't have my daughter at home anymore to assist me.
I don't have a whole tech department, it's just, you know.
Mr. Kissel.
And it's usable, and it's not gonna be costly.
Okay. Mr. Kissel.
It may be worth, I mean, again, we're talking pennies, but not that much money. We are open to the public.
Right.
So, technically, when we have, we weren't open to the public, I think we needed to have, you know, unlimited.
Yeah.
Because who knows how many. But I think if we said, hey, in a sense, first come, first served for that.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's no different than chairs. You're either gonna stand, or you're gonna sit.
Okay. So, it seems clear, you know, from consensus of the committee, that we're gonna continue with it, we're gonna look to maybe utilize it more. Ms. Lipsen Subcommittee can maybe look at that and how we want to do that, and then hopefully, at some point in the future, you know, we won't have to depend upon it as more. So, that's good. Thank you very much about that. The other issue I wanted to raise with the committee members is communication. And one of the things I would recommend is that we use the email account, and the rationale behind that is, one, it's a public, then it's stored, and so if there's any question about what was communicated, that's stored, and it can be easily produced. You know, I would recommend that you use your, you know, if we're texting somebody, it could be just something, you know, what time is the meeting, things like that. But committee discussion, you know, not, we don't have discussions on emails, but if there are agenda items and things like that, and people want things like that, we use the email accounts. We all have Boobin Public School email accounts, and just use them to, to inform everybody, you know, I want this on the agenda, or something come up and so forth. That's how I'm gonna use it, to communicate with you as members, and I hope you can use the same thing communicating with your subcommittee members. I hope nobody has any problem.
No problem, but just to confirm that we include Dr. Crowley on those emails?
Yes, for the most part, you know, unless there's some rationale why you didn't, but in general.
It's in the policy, just as far as like the keeping track thing, so.
Yeah, but as long as we're doing our account, all those ones are stored, so there's no problem. You know, I think in general, it's a good idea to inform the superintendent or whoever's ever involved, like Mr. Alconata or something for finance, about what's happened, you know, what you're thinking about for your subcommittees. I, myself, I told the superintendent, if I'm relaying information to staff, I will include him on the email, so he'll see. Like, I sent out the thank you note to the nurse, and I included the superintendent, just so he knows. The other thing I wanted to mention, and, you know, this has been a great awakening for me, is prior to, when I was chair last time, the amount of communication we're getting by email is really amazing. I'm not even sure we got emailed last time I was on. I think we had one account, and, you know, nobody ever.
Kids used to carry it.
Yeah, but I do want to take this time to, you know, let the public know that I, I, you know, as school committee chair, the policy is that I respond to them. When I respond to them, I include the members. So, if you see that I miss an email, please let me know. I know Helene sent me something that she found, and so, for, for the public, I want them to know that we read the emails, I'll respond to them. And again, we may or may not be able to take action on your thing, but we are reading them, and we are communicating to the administration the things that are being sent, so. And I, I, you know, want to remind the committee, if you get communications from individuals, really should forward it so that we all see it, so we're all working on the same page. Okay? And then finally.
Showing on that?
Yeah.
I don't know if it would be easy, I don't think, if, we have to ask Jen, when she gets back from Florida, she probably never comes back. If you could do an automatic reply back to someone, so that they know it's been received?
Yeah.
If you make up a little blurb that just says it's been received by the committee, you know, because you do work.
Yeah.
And sometimes people think that, you know, this is your only job.
Yeah.
So, and, you know, if someone sends an email at nine in the morning, their response is by 10:00, they're gonna get an answer.
I'm still getting, you know, it's, it's not the same as my Outlook account at work, which is a little easier for me to track. This one's a little more difficult for me to track, so I'm trying to get the handle on it. I understand the, you know, it's a good idea, but the problem is, the way I usually do emails, if I see it's not open, then I know I haven't responded. If I'm sending these automated, and a lot of people.
Maybe she can flag it for you.
Yeah, or there's, maybe there's some folder, I don't know. I will talk to her when she comes back about creating a folder.
That everything would stay.
Right, because.
These people would get an automatic response back.
Right, yeah. Because some people do ask.
Automatic response that won't show that your email's been read.
Okay, there is, okay, so I'll get a hold of that, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah. Because I know people do ask questions, and, you know, we try to answer them as best we can. And again, I want to remind people, if you have questions about your individual student, you know, you know, unless it's some general thing that you're using your student as an example, please work with your principals and your teachers, don't include the school committee, because really, we don't get involved in the nitty gritty of working in the school system. And we're really policy and procedures, so. Again, but we thank everybody who reaches out to us, because it shows people are really passionate about the school system, so, thank you. So the other thing I would like to do is have, go around and have everybody introduce their subcommittees. And we'll do that through the subcommittee reports. And just tell, what I'd like, besides what you've, your meeting was, what your goal is for your subcommittee, what your committee's working on, and what you anticipate your committee's working on. And we'll do that as we go through the subcommittee list. And I appreciate everybody, most of them I've met, I know Mr. Kissel hasn't met yet, but he will in the future. He's taking after my chairmanship of the.
You gotta throw that out there?
Anyways, so we'll start with the finance subcommittee, Ms. Chisholm.
We did meet on January 19th here at the Joyce Middle School with Superintendent Dr. Matt Crowley, Assistant Superintendent Bob Alconata, Dr. Michael Boltsari, Patty McKinnon, and School Committee Members Colin, Tommy, and myself. We reviewed the list of bills prior to the meeting and the balance of accounts. Questions were submitted, and then accordingly, questions that needed further review were the expenditures in the facilities and maintenance, and we requested that Dave Duckley attend our next meeting, so that he can update us on some of those. Balance of accounts had the power of salary over at the Altavesta, but that was due to adding another kindergarten class after the start of school year, that, so that made sense to that. But we had, warrant one was for $1,363,785,49. Warrant two was for $1,428,649,20. Warrant three was for $40,748,26. Warrant four was for $248,081,51. Warrant five, $841,879,74. Warrant six, $87,138,99. There was a motion from us to approve it, but sent to the board committee, so we need a motion to approve those.
I have a motion to approve that?
Second.
Motion to approve.
I have a second.
I'm so used to you saying it, Jen, sorry.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
I have a voice.
Motion carries.
Yes, and with the balance account reviewed and found to all be in order, and there was some discussion on the overage of homeless transportation, but that's just going to be ongoing forever.
Okay.
And our goal would be to keep the lights on in the buildings, and make sure that we pay our bills and we stay afloat.
And I.
And we do meet once a month, but we will be meeting more once the budget comes, and we'll get a list of dates that those will be available, so if anybody that wants to attend those meetings can, so we'll give enough notice.
Right. And I think we're going to, you know, it worked pretty well last year where we had the finance subcommittee lead on the budgets, and it was, you know, the other members could attend, so I think we'll try that again this year, and hopefully it'll work just as well.
And maybe that could even be something we could do Google Meet or Zoom for people, so it'd be easier.
Okay. Okay, any questions for finance? Moving on, Mr. Lipsit, communications subcommittee, the new subcommittee.
Yes, we had our inaugural meeting on Monday, January 24th, at 3:30 PM. We met at the Hurl Wyman, at the conference room there. In attendance were Dr. Crowley, Dr. Boltsari, Ms. Mendez Sheldon, Mr. Moren, Ms. Crowley, who was virtual for the meeting, and myself. And so really what we were meeting on was exactly this, trying to define exactly what it is that the subcommittee will be, will be looking at. So we talked about methods for increasing our ability to hear from, to communicate with different parts of the wider school community and Boobin at large. A few of the things that we, we talked around were methods, for example, for increasing our ability to hear from and communicate with students and student groups, including our student representatives, senior class officers were mentioned, clubs, student organizations. Mr. Moren talked about middle school students and how we can sort of bring that into communication as well. We tend to hear mostly from high school students, can we start to extend that downward? We talked about how we can approach follow-up on communications that are received by the school committee, so mentioning emails coming to you on particular issues that might need a deeper dive, the communications subcommittee can look into that, try to respond, try to put together information on whatever inquiries are brought to us. Ms. Crowley also mentioned the idea of holding, for example, a meet your school committee member night, where members could talk with the public about the role of the school committee, use the subcommittee as an opportunity to educate the public on what we do and its importance and sort of the rights and the roles and responsibilities of the school committee. We also determined that the communications subcommittee is going to sort of be the home for family and community engagement, so we will receive regular updates from Ms. Mendez Sheldon and her team as a regular part of our meetings, in addition to some of the above. And on that note, Ms. Mendez Sheldon brought up the question of making regular school committee meetings more accessible to families that don't speak English at home. We're looking to sort of be able to reach more people with our, with school committee meetings and make them more accessible. And we talked about the feasibility of translating meetings either simultaneously or after the fact, so that families can access them more easily. Dr. Crowley actually suggested the use of language line as a possibility to provide simultaneous translation, so that's going to be on our agenda for next time, is sort of looking into the feasibility of that, administration's going to look into it. And that was it, we adjourned at 4:19 PM.
Okay, thank you very much. Wish you well. You know, communication, we've struggled with this as a committee for a number of years, long before you remember, there were communications subcommittee, and just trying to find ways to better communicate with people and hopefully, you know, because we want the parents to feel involved, and we want, we also want people that don't have children in the schools to be involved, you know, to, because it is a big resource and a big expenditure of money, so look forward to the things you're doing, and hopefully we'll get some good results out of that, and we'll continue with them. Thank you. Okay, next up is Curriculum and Data Trends Subcommittee, Mr. Moren.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just for those audience members and people here tonight. The curriculum subcommittee is made up of myself, Ms. Chisholm, and Mr. Kissel. We work hand in hand, side by side, in a partnership, obviously, with our curriculum coordinator, Ms. Young, Dr. Boltsari, as well as Dr. Crowley, and all avenues, all avenues of curriculum. And you'll, you'll hear a little bit of my report tonight, just three items from our short meeting the other day, some of the exciting programs and things that go on each and every day. Besides COVID, our staff and our administrators are working with education. And I think, just a few examples we brought up tonight, I think, future agenda items, we talked about goals for each subcommittee. Ms. Young's already anticipating next month's meeting, at a time and date to be determined, whereby she'll bring in different curriculum people that are working in our district and tell us some of the highlights of what's going on in the different avenues and areas for those people that aren't aware of what they're doing. So with that said, I'm going to start off with our most recent meeting, which was held over here at the Joyce Middle School on Wednesday, January 19th, here at the Joyce at 9:00 AM. And that meeting was present was Ms. Callanan from the high school, Ms. Conley from the high school, and other staff members, they were department head members, that hadn't leave that one, to go back to the high school for mid-years. So we did have a staff crew here from the high school, obviously, Dr. Crowley, Dr. Boltsari, and Ms. Young were here from the school district, and Ms. Paige Crowley, Erin Johnson, our ELL and curriculum coordinators, as well as language leaders, myself, Ms. Chisholm, and Mr. Kissel was away. So the first item we talked about, which our student rep brought up tonight, Ms. Callanan presented the program of studies for Boobin Memorial High School. I believe each member has a copy at their desk tonight. Hopefully you had a chance to review some of it, and I'll go by it as fast as I can from Ms. Callanan's notes. Lots of exciting dual enrollment and new classes coming into our staff. Great partnership has been developed with Middlesex Community College, whereby some of our students will be receiving certifications with the partnership made through Middlesex. Established pathways where Ms. Callanan was in recently with us as well, where she's establishing pathways for our students, having a plan for the students, as well as a vision of the graduates at Boobin Memorial High School. The funding for some of these upcoming new classes were found by Ms. Conley and staff through different avenues and different grants, as well as some from our budget. And as I indicated in my notes, you're going to get a handout, so I have that. Highlighting on pages seven and eight of the handout are the dual enrollment opportunities that are developed through Middlesex, some exciting classes there. And some of the new classes you might see on there, they came out of the youth risk survey that was presented to the administration to grow these classes, showing the needs of our students, because that developed some of those. There will be small stipends to the staff, but for the home spot, there's going to be ongoing classes within the school day. The jobs fair coming up, I believe Ms. Callanan referenced Mr. Kissel and the Chamber of Commerce, what do you guys call yourself, Business Association?
Nope, nope, Boobin Chamber of Commerce.
Boobin Chamber of Commerce coming to the high school soon. So far, she's had approximately 30 representatives coming to the school, again, opening that up to the students, to learn opportunities for the students. There was a motion from Ms. Chisholm to forward and approve the program of studies as presented, so at this time, I can entertain that motion to move the full, the full committee, the program of studies presented from Boobin Memorial High School.
So if I, if I understand the motion, it's to approve the addition of the new courses with the stipulation that the courses will only take place if there is sufficient enrollment? Is that correct?
Right, right.
Okay, so that's the motion. Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay.
On the motion?
Cut Mr. Lipsit first.
Yep, on the motion.
Again, I may have to defer to.
I got Mr. Lipsit on the motion, yes.
I, just, just a quick note, because I have to. I, I'm really, really excited about some of the things that I'm seeing on this course catalog.
Besides history?
No, mostly history, English too. First four pages are great. But I especially want to highlight the same thing that Sophia highlighted, the dual enrollment course for English and history. That's a course that I taught, or a similar course that I taught for many, many years. It is still the highlight of my teaching career. I know that it was the highlight of a lot of, of a lot of the students who took that course, and I'm really, really excited to see it coming to Boobin as well. It's a, it's a fantastic opportunity and does so much to really enrich students' understandings of literature, of history, of the ways in which they can be used to support each other. And so, yeah, just nothing but positive things. I can't decide whether I'd rather teach some of these courses or take them, so, yeah, fully in favor.
Okay. Mr. Kissel?
So these are new courses, are they, what's being replaced, I guess, in a sense? In other words, if a new course is coming in, obviously something's coming out.
Obviously, that question came up during the subcommittee, Mr. Kissel and I asked Ms. Callanan, that, you know, obviously, what's missing and what left? Those are courses that there was no longer interest in.
Okay.
So obviously, the courses went out, these, also to Mr. Lipsit's point, these are courses that the students reacted to and thought they would be nice to have. So I said, what, so what did you take away? And what for? Why? And that was the response I got, unless Ms. Young wanted to chime in.
No, I was going to say, there, also, it's not like it's one for one.
Yeah.
So there's also courses where they, you know, they're going to offer them, then look at the enrollment numbers, and then they'll go through, and that's when they'll figure out who's kind of teaching what where.
Okay. So if a course, I don't know if you were saying right, it's not gone, it's, this is going to hopefully replace, in a sense, replace it, or potentially pull some kids from a larger class?
Sure. Yes, I was going to say, so yearly, they, I mean, they, they look through and they look at enrollment, and there's courses that they have been putting them on, and they haven't been getting sufficient enrollment, and they're, you know, they probably, those would be the ones that would be getting phased out anyway.
Yeah.
But every year, they kind of take a look at what the needs are, and ask, really, a lot of this comes from asking educators, what are the courses that they'd be interesting in, interested in adding onto kind of their repertoire of teaching.
Okay. And this is not any staff increase at all? Obviously, this is just people taking over different courses?
Yes.
That's all.
Okay. Mrs. Chisholm?
Only on this, like, after I took this home in Canada, like, read through it a lot. Some of it is kind of concerning to me, and so I just really want to hope that parents read, if they, if they do this for what these courses entitle and actually carry through. I just don't want to make sure that we're not recreating stuff and causing more of an issue at a school, because some of the stuff in highlights is the difference. On the wellness class, the prerequisite was wellness nine. Some of the things that are in there are just concerning me, I, I just, I know it's been a while since I've had kids in school, but some of this, I think that is, should be more for parents to discuss with their kids. And I don't know who would be teaching this. When the wellness class started, when we hired a wellness person at the high school several years ago, it was more to teach kids how to eat properly and exercise and what to cook for meals, and, and this just goes a little bit further than I would want to see some kids, and I just, I think it could be something to make people feel a little bit uncomfortable, so I just want to make sure that they just pay attention to what's actually in these classes. But I do want to say that, you know, Erin Page did an outstanding job, and I just think that the amount of time they must have spent getting that far, so I hope all of the members got that and actually went through and read what they did, because I'm sure that could have, must have taken them hours to do, it was outstanding. And the fact that they're pushing for this dual enrollment with Middlesex is excellent opportunity for many kids to take advantage of, and I really want to, I hope that's promoted greatly at the high school, so that we can get these kids to come back to us too. And you can get two years of Middlesex at less money, and then go on to U Lowell with the bridge program, it's going to be a heck of a lot less money for, for kids and parents to take on, so that was very exciting to me.
Okay, thank you. Miss Comier?
Thank you. I was interested to see a lot of the things in these, in this packet, a lot of things that I've taught myself as well with my population, but to Ms. Chisholm's point, I think that while parents do absolutely have the right to teach their students, I'm presuming she's talking about some of the reproductive topics here, some would prefer others to, and again, that's a conversation that a student can have with the parent. But I think that arming our youth with more information rather than less is what's going to maintain their wellness going forward after they leave us. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lipsit?
Just to add on a little bit to that, you know, the, and, and I do absolutely understand Ms. Chisholm's points. The, the courses that are being taught have been shown time and time again to reduce harmful behaviors, to reduce harmful outcomes, to promote student health. You know, the world we live in, students are bombarded from every direction with messages about all sorts of things. This course gives the schools a chance to provide students with medically accurate, important health and safety information. It does have a parental opt-out, and so to, to speak to your point, I mean, and I think that, that should be known, right? Parents have the right to opt their students out of, of this curriculum, or pieces thereof. But I think, you know, we also have to recognize that we have students in our population who need this information and may not be getting it from other sources. So I think it's really, really important that we are teaching this, and I think it's really, really important that we are committing to this, so.
And could I, just to Ms. Young, you know, all these courses meet the standards that we have, you know, that are set by the state and so forth, so these courses aren't rogue courses, so to speak. These are courses that are well-founded in what's required in educational setting, so.
Yep.
And, you know, we can only emphasize to parents, you know, be involved in your, your students' education, you know, help decide what courses your students should take, and so, you know.
We did talk, we did talk a little bit at the committee around, you know, ways to get more access and give students more time to look through the courses and have that space available for them.
Anybody else from the committee? You know, you all missed, the most important course was the AP Latin course. I picked up on that, and, you know, you worry about the curriculum, and I can see it really hasn't changed much since when I took Latin, you know, Gaelic Wars, you know, Vinnie the Vichy.
Hasn't really changed.
Yeah, not really. That's one of the beauties of that course, so.
Stays consistent.
Anyway, so, so I appreciate, you know, appreciate all the hard work that went into developing these core, you know, developing a core, you know, Mr. Lipsit can tell us, you know, trying to develop a course and meet the standards is not an easy thing. And for teachers to want to develop a new course, I think speaks highly of their wanting to get involved and to provide their students with, you know, great education, so we appreciate that. So we have, Mr. Moren?
A little more on the, on the motion and on the topic itself, and Ms. Young can obviously emphasize this as well. We have seen our, I lost the course.
I don't know.
Innovation.
Yes, innovation pathways.
Our innovation pathways, I think, you know, Dr. Wells, Latin, Mr. Lipsit, you know, it could be any English thing, I think if you want to discuss the innovation, how that's still ongoing.
We have to act on this.
Yeah, I know.
I just wanted to add to that before we.
Thank you, Ms. Crowley, only, you know, practice, I'll get to learn to corral them.
We can move the motion.
Yes. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Mr. Moren, did you want to ask about, Ms. Young, about the innovation pathways, and try to give a little overview of it?
I have a better idea now.
The knowledge about innovation pathways.
Sure.
That was part of the discussion as well during the program of studies, and it was highlighted that it's still an ongoing program at Boobin Memorial High School, and Ms. Young more, that, that it all, I know Ms. Callanan is very impressed with that, as is the community.
Yeah, so our science and technology coordinator, Kim Dustin Hoppen, has, I think she's come and spoke here before about it, but each year, as part of this grant, we are required to continue to build on it. So a lot of the new courses are continuing to build off of the expectations in that program, as well as, one of the things, which I think is what we're talking about, is that the program has now moved down into the middle schools, and so it's just continuing to grow. But we do have each year to say as a part of this, and to receive the funding, we have to continue to grow the program and meet certain expectations and requirements, and so that's what some of the courses are.
Yeah, I think it's well, we had them last year, and I think it's well worth having them again.
Yeah.
You know, again, referring back to Mr. Kissel's Boobin Chamber of Commerce meeting, I had an opportunity to speak there, and I did mention about the innovation pathways, and I think a lot of the businesses were excited about that, you know, they see the benefit of things like that, so that'd be good.
Absolutely.
Was that on Zoom, did we listen?
Ah, yeah, it was a early morning, early morning. All right.
And I'm glad that we discussed that morning at the subcommittee, was, I don't know, two through Paige Crowley, no relation, she introduced herself to the staff.
Separating herself.
No relation to Dr. Crowley, or Ellen Crowley, but also, I want to thank Jessica Cloud, she's going to, maybe Ms. Young will come to email anybody the copy of the document that Ms. Crowley presented to us. She's the curriculum coordinator for grade six through 12, and she introduced us with her entry plans for the grade six through 12 program. Again, to Mrs. Chisholm's point, just looking at it, it's a lot of work, so I have a handout ready, I've asked all copies to the school committee members, showing great ways to assist our staff, both new staff and veteran staff throughout the district. Awesome entry plans outlined in this handout for all levels. She also has some, a PD, a professional development company that's being funded to help develop proper programs that better, provide better lessons for our district. Again, you know, for some of the veteran members here, it was introduced that we're going to have this program, or that program, or this happening on PD days. I think through Paige's diligence, she came up with a company that kind of does that, did a lot of surveying, did a lot of inquiries and researching, find out what our district needs and what it should be adding. A lot of use in what's called Desmos and Zavis at middle and high school math. If we have time, we'll have Ms. Young talk about that, but that's, again, an outside program that's brought in to help out with our middle and high schools' math. Again, we've always talked at this table, some of the needs for the math issues at middle, and perhaps up at the high school, this will lead to work towards improving some of that. Again, a must-need entry plans for each level with goals and action steps outlined in her documents. So if you get an opportunity, once you are received this, again, I don't want to go through all of it, but it's very, very concise and precise from Ms. Crowley, and she's happy to me, but anybody have questions, let us know, and we'll introduce Ms. Crowley at another time, but she was fantastic at the subcommittee. The third member that came to our meeting was Ms. Erin Johnson, and then she introduced herself to the subcommittee, and she's playing many roles throughout the district, not just the regular role of the English language, English learner and world coordinator, entry plans. The entry plans, again, here it is, it's similar, I don't even know where to begin. It's intense.
She did an excellent job.
Yeah, it's, it's, again, a plan that each and every staff person needed, and she got it set up with a lot of work. English language and world language coordinator entry plans presented to our staff. An extensive handout full of needs of professional development for all of our staff on behalf of ELL students and families. So she's done, if you work through this, she's done her research and the reasons why. Some impressive goals and timelines outline the work to be done in the district, as well as achieving some of the goals. And I think, again, just like Ms. Crowley, Paige Crowley, Erin's put in here, goals and objectives with a timeline for our district to achieve. And again, as I opened up, Dr. Wells asked what the curriculum subcommittee done, that is just a small example, a tip of the iceberg, as you say, as to what our curriculum coordinator, or not just Ms. Young, but all of our staff are doing in our district. So I think, looking forward to other presenters like that at the subcommittee level, with newer, exciting programs to present to us, and then thereby present to the public and the community at large, to know that whatever they may see, or the counselors may see in a budget line item, we like to use the phrase money well-spent, well-invested, you know, in our dollars than what we're getting for that. And our meeting concluded, and adjourned, I don't know, two in the afternoon, no, 10:30 tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for curriculum?
Definitely retired.
Okay.
You guys never meet.
Nope.
Next up is the Personnel Subcommittee, Miss Cormier.
Yes, we have not met. My vision for this subcommittee is to continue to attract, hire, and support the exceptional caliber of staff that Woburn Public Schools strives to maintain, along with the superintendent and Ms. Boyagen in the Human Resources Department.
Okay, that's good, and, you know, I was talking to the superintendent, one of the things he will provide your subcommittee with is an Excel spreadsheet of individuals that are on contracts, so you can make sure, you can schedule to make sure that they're approved at the appropriate times.
I love an Excel spreadsheet.
Yeah. And then also, maybe you, you know, our continuing effort to diversify our staff work with, you know, the HR department and see about how they're going about it and any advances.
To better reflect our student population.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we look forward, and maybe if you could say who's on your subcommittee with you?
I actually don't. Mr. Lipsit is?
And me.
And Ms. Chisholm?
Yep, good.
We haven't met, it's not in my head yet.
Yeah, that's fine. All right, thank you very much. Mr. Kissel, Resource and Capital Planning Subcommittee?
We have not met, as was alluded to earlier. Our job will be to keep the public updated on buildings and grounds. Our main focus coming up, I had a little side meeting with Bob Elkanada regarding the feasibility study, which will be going out to bid soon, and once that is out to bid, it is going to be a study on the whole district, not just, I think there might have been some confusion on a specific school, so we'll be on the whole district, and how we can utilize the space that we have, and to see what space will be needed for the future. And I have two fantastic school committee members on my committee.
Two?
Which ones?
I don't know.
Oh, I'm on that.
One, two? It's on my cheat sheet at home.
Thank you.
We read that.
Now, the resource, you know, I think you're going to be working pretty hard this, after this report comes in, because it's one of the things we're going to have to do to figure out where we're going and so forth. And again, that would be good to liaise with the city council, Mr. Viola, and keep him informed on that, because obviously, any decisions, you know, we make are going to involve the council.
One other portion, I guess, the capital planning piece of it as well.
Yep.
So we'll look into that, and look at our future capital plans, and see what we need to work with the city on as well.
Any questions for resources? Okay, and finally, we have the Student Services and Achievement Subcommittee, Ms. Crowley.
So we have not met yet, but I've met with Director Ryan and had a brief, briefing on these, the special education budget. I have a meeting set up with CPAC in order to shape the vision of where the subcommittee is going. The way that I see it is that the subcommittee, on behalf of the school committee, will be studying and deliberating issues in the district uniquely involving special education, including, but not limited to, budgetary staffing and resources needed to run effective in-district programming. We will act as an advocate for Woburn students who receive services through an individual education program and/or accommodation by representing the students' unique interests at the, at the table. We, of course, promote inclusion equity and diversity in principles of all students and varying learning styles and experiences. We will certainly be acting as a liaison between the Special Education Parent Advisory Committee and also the English Language Learner Parents Advisory Committee, and we will be working on providing multiple formats for parents to be engaged with the school committee, particularly parents made vulnerable, vulnerable populations. The SSA Subcommittee also addresses issues of social, emotional learning and mental health needs in the district, be certainly looking at and keeping track of those data trends, and we will certainly just be the go-to Subcommittee for emotional, social, emotional learning, and we will be experts in that field. And, you know, as always, we will just be the Subcommittee that continues to advocate for populations made vulnerable by different social structures.
And who joining you on this Subcommittee?
It is I, it is Mr. Lipsit, it is Mr. Moran, which is also the composition of the Communications Subcommittee, so we might be doing some joint work there.
Okay, good, okay.
Thank you.
Any questions for that Subcommittee? Superintendent does have SEEM Collaborative Annual Report, and I think that fits under your Subcommittee, so he's going to give a brief overview of that. All the members have it, and so Superintendent, if you want to.
Yes, just very, very briefly, as everyone here knows, I sit on the Board of the SEEM Collaborative, and Dr. Kathy Lawson is the Executive Director of the SEEM Collaborative, and we meet regularly to discuss the goings-on of the students that are part of the SEEM organization, and so one of the things that I'm asked to do is provide the committee an annual report, including, at the end, an audit that gets done annually, and so all, it's an annual report with the financials and the audit for your review. If you have any additional questions after you review it, feel free to ask me, and I will be happy to respond accordingly.
Maybe if you could just give a brief for the audience, the extensive audience that we have about SEEM, and how important it is for our belonging to it, what it does and so forth.
Oh, sure, so what this allows us to do is, we have, it's for special education students, and we are able to caution, as a member district, when we have students that need to be placed out of district, we're able to find placements for them in an expeditious manner and provide great service to the students and families of the SEEM Collaborative.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the committee on the SEEM Collaborative?
They'll make a great reading.
Yeah, and no voters required.
No.
No voters required. So, thank you, everybody, for the Subcommittee, and, you know, just reflecting on my years on the school committee, it's amazing that when I first started on the school committee, there was no Curriculum Subcommittee, there was no Student Services Subcommittee, and the importance of those two Subcommittees, it's hard to imagine having a School Committee Subcommittee list without those, so just shows, you know, we've advanced and, you know, we're trying to make things better, and so things are just moving forward. So I appreciate that, and we look forward to the reports during the course of the year. Next up is Correspondence. Let me start, we had correspondence from two of our aldermen. First one I'd like to mention is Ward Alderman. Four, Mr. Demeris, he reached out to Mr. Dunkley, and Mr. Kissel was on this, about the lighting situation at the Harold Wyman School, and it seems as though it's been resolved. The concern was about the lights shining on the neighbors. And again, this is concerning to us, because this is a neighborhood that never had a school. It's not like people moved in and knew there was going to be a school there, so we're trying to be good neighbors, and Mr. Dunkley was able to work with the custodians there, that they'll be able to turn off the lights when they leave, except for the security lights. I know, if you, since I'm around that area, I could, I've commented a couple of times, I don't know how you could sleep with some of the lights, but, but we appreciate Mr. Dunkley working with the aldermen and getting that resolved. The second, what, Mr. Moran facilitated communication with the Ward Five Alderman, Ms. Bruin, and she's interested in having us come before the Finance Subcommittee of the Council, and so it looks like we're going to be February 7th, was it?
Seven.
Seventh. All the members are welcome, but I particularly asked Ms. Chisholm, as the Head of Finance, to be, be there to represent us. Mr. Elkanada will prepare a presentation. I think they're interested in the money that we're spending for COVID relief, I think that was their, one of their things they were interested in, and so we want to give them some information about that, and then I'm hoping that if, with Ms. Chisholm there, that they can have, form a liaison with our Finance Subcommittee, and they can have discussions as needed. So we look forward to that, and all committee members are welcome, once we get the time, they haven't given us the time yet.
Will there be a cake for Mr. Moran, because that is his birthday?
If Mr. Moran brings the cake.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, oh, we got the time? Okay, six o'clock. We most certainly must have a cake there, so.
That could get.
Yeah, but anyway, so everybody's invited, and we look forward to meeting with the council on that.
Seven oh's a big year.
Also, I had communications from Emily Crowley, who is no relation to any of the Crowleys here, I understand, Allison Burnett, and Deborah Parlay. I've received their emails, I've responded to them, I believe, everybody, and I will send them to Ms. McLeod for inclusion in the record. So do I have a motion to?
Motion to make those part of the permanent record, Ms. McCleod.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next up is Future.
On, because we don't have unfinished business, but we used to have, so we should shut that, but I just want to say a shout-out to the VOKE for passing that valid question yesterday, and so that that school will now be open to, hopefully in 2025, I believe, is their goal.
Okay.
So that they can have a new building, and get a lot of new cabins and facilities and architects over there, but it was very much a success.
So if I could just comment?
Yeah.
So I spoke to the superintendent just prior to the vote being taken, and I asked him how long he's been working on, he said 17 years.
Wow.
So this has been a long process, and so I spoke to him after the vote, and he's so happy to have this come to fruition, and so I just, to your point, I think it's going to be a nice opportunity for our students, and we have a great partnership, and so I just wanted to.
And it will increase our enrollment over there, so that will be even better, be allowed to have more kids go watch the program.
And, you know, we, you know, at some point, you know, we've had meetings with them, so we'll have to figure out when Subcommittee can interact with them, because we've had members go over there in the past, I don't know, we probably haven't with our new members gone over there.
What COVID gave to one?
Yeah, that's true, yeah. But it's, it's really worthwhile, so if not this year, hopefully next year, we could have a meeting, a meeting with them over there, so you can see the resources they have, because it's good that we interact with them, because we don't want to duplicate services, but we want to learn what works and what doesn't, so we'll work on that.
And I want to think, just, on the graduation change date?
Yep.
Has there been any response to that at the high school? Is?
I think that, I mean, I saw Omar the following day, or, he thought the response was very positive, and Ms. Callanan says the same thing, so.
As long as it's out there for parents to know.
Yeah, I think everybody knows, that needs to know. I know, actually, Ms. Callanan communicated it out almost at night, so, and she's, she's good at making sure people are aware.
Okay. Mr. Kissel?
Doesn't have to be tonight, because I'm not sure if we'll be able to get the list of names, but I don't think we've done this artwork.
Yeah, we've, we've had a discussion about that.
Oh, saying names?
Yeah.
Well, we can just point to it.
We do have. New art.
Just make it.
New art.
We can have the camera could scan.
Yeah.
Or maybe what we'll do is, we'll identify the schools and say it's from this school.
Yeah.
That's what I'll work on next time.
I believe that this is the high school.
The high school, well, that was easy.
Yeah. On to the next one. Take that off your list.
Yep, take that off my list. And so the, another thing is, the superintendent pointed out, we have a February 23rd meeting scheduled, and that's during the vacation, and so, I don't know if people have their calendars, so if somebody could remind me what the next, the next school committee meeting is?
The eighth.
The eighth?
Eighth.
Okay, we'll have that one. Do we want, so.
Well, when will budget be ready? It's probably?
First part of March.
Okay.
February 28th, a Monday?
We want to try to have one.
Third of.
How about the 29th this year? We could do that.
No 29ths.
I know.
Just.
You gotta wait four years for that.
I get it, I just don't.
The 20th, the next regular meeting is a week after that.
Yeah.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
So do, do we want to just have one meeting in February?
Sure.
We have a few more with the budget.
If we need, we could always post it.
Yeah, if we need, if we need to have one, we'll post it, then. Does that work for the members?
Sure.
Okay, the Subcommittee's will keep meeting, obviously, and, okay, and if we need to post one, we'll post one. Okay, so do I have a motion to cancel the February 23rd meeting?
I'll make a motion to cancel the January 23rd.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, any future agenda items anybody want to mention, or if you have, you can send them to me, or the, oh, Mr. Lipsit?
I mentioned this last year, it would be good to get the diversity and equity inclusion coordinator, who was hired by SEEM, I would love to get to meet her.
Okay, that sounds good. I don't know, Ms. Cormier hasn't won yet this year, so.
So close today, it was a Colleen.
Ah.
I was ready. You asked me what it is?
Talking about the Woburn Boys and Girls Club, they have an annual fundraiser, and pot of luck, pot of gold, and they have a weekly drawing, and then they have a big one on St. Patrick's Day, so. We always encourage people to support these local, you know, she would. All right, anything else for future agenda items? Oh, I do have one thing. This is the most important thing, we're, I almost forgot about it, but I didn't. This, so most of you know, several, probably a decade ago, Woburn High School was one of the first high schools to institute giving diplomas to veterans who left school, who, you know, started out with the World War II veterans, because a lot of them, you know, didn't stick around for graduation, they went right off to war, and so this, you know, it was picked up throughout the state. We're fortunate, and I'm fortunate, to be chairman, to sign Henry A. Andrews diploma. He was a Woburn High student in 1960, he would have graduated in 1961, he went into service in the Air Force, he served throughout the Vietnam War and stayed with the National Guard for over 20 years. He happened to be visiting his relatives and saw, one of them had a diploma, you know, similar to this, and so he, family reached out, you know, and, you know, you know, we're always ecstatic to help our veterans, and so I'm pleased to sign my name, the superintendent has signed his, Ms. Callanan has signed hers, and the mayor has signed his, to verify